Good evening, it's welcome night school board meeting is Monday, September the 28th, 2020. We're in this is totally largely border in the 1887 building like.
Well note that Mrs. Fisher is unable to attend this evening. Uh, Mr. Gayheart here, Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Grakowski.
Yes.
Did you have a quorum? We will continue. I will note that this meeting has been noticed for state statutes. Doesn't invite back that there's no one here. I guess when there's no community participation unless you have something to read in.
Uh, I do not.
Okay. So dispense with reading that move to our approval of our board minutes. Have regular enclosed session um from 14. Any questions on those? I passed out closed session with those of your here person, regular attached. Not hearing any, so I guess I'll promote motion for the regular session.
I move to approve minutes of the September 14th, 2020 regular session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I moved in second and to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2020 regular session school board meeting as presented. Throw a couple please.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski.
Yes.
Motion carried uh for our closed session.
Uh, move to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2020 closed session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I moved in second and to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2020 closed session school board meeting as presented. Throw a couple please.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
It's in.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
And Ms. Grakowski.
Epstein.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Kruin.
The uh general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 140797 through 140968. Wire transfers 242 and 249 through 251. ACH check numbers 034 to 049. Debt service wire transfers 243 to 46. And option renovation wires number 247 and 248. In a combined amount of 1,717,755 dollars and 77 cents. Notice the debt service payment, we make payments twice a year, so this is our semi annual interest payment on our debt applications from school district.
Questions to Mr. Kruin?
Um, yeah, question on on page 13 of the PDF that was sent to us. You had referenced like little learners um in your in your memo, but there was another one called 4K stipend and snack. Does that that's the same thing?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, there's three of them, so I just misseded the one.
Yeah, so Little Bear and then Step Ahead.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my question. Thank you.
Any questions? There is none. I'm looking for motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of September 28th, 2020. Check numbers 140797 to 140968. Wire numbers 242 and 249 to 251. ACH check number 034 to 049. Debt service wire numbers 243 to 246. And option renovation wire numbers 247 to 248. In the combined amount of 1,517,755 dollars and 77 cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second and to approve the general and other fund bills of September the 28th, 2020. Checks number 140797 to 140968. Wire number 242 and 249 to 251. ACH check number 034 to 049. Debt service wire numbers 243 to 246. And options renovation wire numbers 247 to 248. Combined amount of 1,517,755 dollars and 44 cents as presented.
Is that 77 cents? Okay, you said 44, so.
Did I?
Uh huh.
How could I come up with 44?
He's testing us.
Yeah, he's testing zero.
Throw a couple.
Uh, Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski.
Yes.
Motion carried. The board's discussion items, student report.
So tonight is high school is the wanna play contest. Um, yes, that's what I found going to afterwards. Um, we were still able to do a few homecoming activities, so on Tuesday and Thursday, we're going to be having the Mario Kart and Super Smash Bros. tournament. Um, we're going to have window painting, block building and murals socially distanced, of course. Um, and then on Wednesday, we'll be having the powder puff football games. Um, and then Friday, we will be having our socially distanced fun break. Um, at the middle school, they started to do their own student council activities. Um, Target art trade club began today. Um, and then they held their first DECA and National Junior Artist Society meeting last year. Um, Tivitz, uh kids in Miss Decker's class were practicing their social distancing by driving like little Fluhu cars to gym class. I thought was really cute, so they made it a little personal bubble. Um, they're beginning Maker Monday workshops. Um, and then with Miss Seiphal, they made homemade music kits with items around their house, um, like cool little things like that. At Jackson, they've been having a few of their classes outside, um, such as music and math. And then some social studies um classes went on a virtual field trip using Google Earth. And then at Westside, they got to try out their new Gargaball pit, which was created by a former student um as part of their Eagle Scout project for boy scouts. Um, they've been doing passive fundraising through a program called Amazon Smile and then the Box Top app, which I thought was really cool. Um, and then this week's Olvea's lesson was creating kindness chalk murals outside. That is very important.
There's an app for box tops, huh?
I know.
You don't have to come out?
That's why I had to.
How you just scan the barcode?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is that on there or down the? Get some more. They used to make the kids who were in trouble down the office couple of weeks. Get them off your bike.
All right.
All right, options renovation. Okay, not a lot to talk about in renovation, but I want to give you a few pictures. Okay. So uh the tree removal on the outside of the building is taking place. I don't know if you'd ever been behind St. Nats. It doesn't look pretty right now, but I was just bored. It's they took out those big pine trees that used to hang over the roof that was creating drainage problems. With pine needles falling in the roof, we thought that's. Um, on the roof, if you go by whoops, you can see all the roofing materials they have stacked up on the roof. Uh, ready to get started on that part of the project. And this is on the the front of the building looking this way. Again, there's going to be the drive way, just like Jackson, so they've taken some bushes out that are going to be there. Obviously, want to say we'll preserve as much of the trees and plants that we can, but this will be a drive right here. And then in the back, there were these dead trees. There's old piles of bark where they drowned the stump. I'm sure that this was um three or four dead ash trees, I believe, right there that would really make me nervous when people are sitting on their own during baseball games. Cause they're they were dead and branches were probably. So um on the inside of the building, the abatments done. Um, they did a really nice job of, you know, removing a lot of the items. It's really stripped down quite a bit. Looks like Westside Elementary now with the the ceiling and the frame up there. Uh, but we are putting in a false ceiling or we can say we don't want to be exposed. That's where we're at for that. We'll start our onsite meetings this Wednesday. Um, and uh so far the the bits came in well. We're still projecting under budget and we may have um the possibility to add some features in that remodel that we're hoping to do. We'll bring that back after we get some final numbers on the plumbing and the electric. Anything you want to add, Paul or Bill?
No, virtual meetings and hopefully Wednesday be at the actual sites, see what's going on. And I did drive by this weekend. It's it's showing the progress and just cleaning up the lot makes it look like a whole different environment as well.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. 2020, 21 grants and entitlements.
Yeah, this is a sheet that we kind of maintain internally. Um, I kind of like to share with the school board all the different grants and entitlements that flow through the school district each and every budget, say each and every year. Some of them are each and every year, which we call entitlements, but there's a number of competitive grants that we also are able to retain. So this document is more kind of the accounting of that in terms of the dollar amounts, who's kind of the the manager of that and the different account codes. But you'll see a whole list of title grant, EGS, real well with the title grants of that that tend to be federal driven for emphasis in in reading, math uh areas along with ELO services. Those are allocated to the school district based on formulas the government comes up with. And then we further have to define those based on free and reduce. Uh, so they do become very focused in terms of which schools are eligible to those. And the whole idea is to really provide additional or supplement services as opposed to supplanting what we're already doing. So there's different regulations that we need to kind of comply with to make sure we are doing that. And then you'll see a number of grants, the IDA, uh, Rita's involved with those, our federal special ed grants. Uh, we've got our cares dollars, which is more of a one time, as far as we know, relative to the pandemic and and some funding to help offset some of those expenses. Uh, inspire, uh, it's school based mental services. Uh, those are grants that are focused more to the career college academy program. Um, the teen parenting program, I think that one actually is going to be expiring because it's not being reauthorized. Um, but we've had that for a number of years and then the mental health has been used to offset social services. Social work services to the county for the CCA program. Bilingual, bicultural, we get some some dollars from the state for ELO services. We got educator effectiveness. Transition readiness grant, that's a competitive grant. Uh, Rio's able to obtain that this year through the DPI. Uh, a good chunk of that's actually going to be the purchase of vehicle to help transport students as part of the transition program for life skills and actual work experience. So it's something we're working on right now. Um, and then students that meet certain criteria, we get an annual dollar amount, which is the transition incentive grant. Act 59, that was some legislation a number of years ago, when students complete certain tech ed programs and certifications. Uh, we get some dollars back for that. It used to be about a thousand dollars program, but I think it's moderated a little bit down from that. Howard Perkins, uh, we have dollars for that, waiting for service fiscal agent. Youth apprenticeship grant, um, that's through Gateway. The youth bill grant, I think you've heard about that a little bit. That's a large grant, three and a half years, uh, almost a million dollars. And then we got peer review mentoring grant, the charter school grant, which again is another new grant that Kelly Demar was able to secure. And that's for the CCA program, um, and that's a three year grant. And then we, the middle school is able to get a fab grant to the state. And then for some of our special ed high cost students that see thirty dollars a student, we're able to pay some additional clean dollars from the state for those kind of costs. So those are most of our grants and then below that, we've got our food service program with a whole number set of different dollars associated with the different programs or summer feed program being one of the larger ones this last year and probably this year too. Since we're continuing to be eligible for this summer feed program. And then Medicaid, uh, we also receive dollars based on services we're providing to students for different special ed and health services. We're able to claim those in unit cost um to receive Medicaid dollars back through the state. So just wanted to give you kind of a sense of the dollars and and amount and various times you'll see some invoices come through. And I'll try to indicate if it's coming or being funded through a certain grants or you're kind of aware of that, so.
Recently received more questions about grants than I've seen in a long time, but you know, I'd like to, you know, thank everybody that's put all this time into getting all these grants. Because none of these are easy to get.
Right.
There's a pile of paperwork that comes along with each one.
Yep.
And every dollar on that list is money that the taxpayers in this town didn't have before.
Exactly.
So should be grateful to the one that put a lot of time into that. So thank you.
And I would just add to that, they provide resources for programming and a lot of the innovative stuff that we do that we wouldn't have those resources without cutting someone else. So looking at things, you know, like that act 59, those dollars, that's sixty one thousand dollars we allocate that right back to support that CTE program. And you provide additional resources.
So the 19 updates.
All right. Want to share with you again, our bi weekly update. It's amazing how quick. We are pretty close to where we've been moderate and this is the third report of this nature. We've been moderate in all three. I think last week we were just over 10. The first week, I think we're at 19. This one, we're at seventeen point five cases per 10,000 within our district boundaries. Um, I think the one that jumped out and predominantly then the county had sent out a memo. Whitewater had 207 for 10,000 in that two week period, which you extrapolate that out. That's over 2,000 per hundred thousand. I think that's pretty close to where New York was at their income line inflection. So pretty high number amongst that population there. But fortunately, again, it's pretty isolated up in that area. The rest of the county is pretty consistent in those numbers. Um, and again, here's our three weeks so far, the 19.31, 10.53, 17.5. And then they also get the age range breakdown on the confirmed cases. The 15 to 19 in that two week period, they did have nine within that. Um, now again, I don't know how many of those were college freshmen, sophomore, age range. Um, we know our high school community in that aspect, but um that's only kids who go to our uh school district that we would be aware. This is again the the breakdown by ages, but that's there available for you to review. This is by the cities. Any questions on that? Okay, then I also wanted to share with you, we did update on the district page. Uh, we created, and this is something um that I think, you know, the weekly updates will probably get to the point. Um, we provide, you get less and less readership in something like that.
Yeah, right.
Regular like that. So I think in the initial transition, the start of the year, those were necessary. I'll probably lean off to referring people to this and then come out with, you know, updates as needed. Um, as I get more people who pay attention communications that way. Um, this is as of two o'clock today. And um if you see instances where we have, for example, one student who tested positive at the middle school, but nobody or exposed or quarantined, it's there's a number of scenarios where, you know, that could happen. In that case, that is at the middle school, the Brickmore building. So when we do, uh, when someone tests positive, the criteria that they look at is um, if they're asymptomatic, you look 48 hours back from the date the sample was collected. If they're symptomatic, you look 48 hours back from the time when they were um started having the onset of symptoms. And so the testing date then becomes irrelevant. It goes back to when the onset of symptoms was.
Right.
So you could have someone who started to get sick, isolated at home, thought it was allergies or, you know, a cold. And it didn't go away, so a week later goes and gets tested and gets the test results back two or three days later. Theoretically, our contact tracing, we'd have to go back 10 days and those 48 hours prior. Now, this hasn't happened to us yet, but we could have to call up families and say, you know, a week and a half ago, your kid was potentially exposed. We realize it's been 10 days, but the quarantine's 14. We're supposed to have quarantine for four more. Which seems really ridiculous. I'm not going to wood. We don't have much of that happen. But it, you know, seems ridiculous from the timelines, but that could happen. But we've had a couple of scenarios where the kids were already either quarantined or isolated at home due to contact with someone else. And then developed symptoms later. So then that puts them outside of a window where they were exposed or anyone within the school.
Came down with on Monday and didn't go to school.
What's that?
Came down with on Monday or something and didn't go to.
And they didn't already have any exposure on, right. That's the other scenario. Yep, they're on vacation, came back, then come back to school with a case of, you know, those types of. Cause I I can't, we don't have our schools perfectly social distanced to where we would have a positive case if they were present in school and not have any exposure. Just some, we would have some people quarantined in just a lot in every scenario. So, but this is available on the dashboard, so people can see what's going on. We'll update just daily at two o'clock. Any questions on this?
Do you have any numbers on individuals who are quarantined who did not exposure at school?
Not being exposed at school? Yes, I would have to go into the web EOC and we could pull that up. We do have, um, there's a handful that are quarantined, not due to exposure at school. And we monitor, we probably have oh, 30 to 40 that we're constantly monitoring on web EOC. Because if anyone goes home with COVID like symptoms at all, then we monitor them, we follow up, see if they get tested. And we also monitor those who have been exposed outside. So in total, the I'd have to look that up. Uh, and you know, we talked about, we didn't want the dash one, the the dash, we didn't want to get too complicated. So that is a number we could report, you know, quarantined due to exposure outside of school. And we haven't done that yet. Most of the dashboards we looked at weren't including that number, but it's something we do track. Okay, there's no other questions on that and personal, personal. All right. Um, your board notes was included, the retirement letter from Jennifer Olson. I want to thank her for her time and congratulate her in her retirement after 24 years of serving in the school district. I believe six years at a previous district. Um, Emily Ansalom is um stepping down September 30th. We wish her well and um her new pursuits. Uh, Max Sorensen is resigning as the middle school boys basketball assistant coach. He will not be coaching in the upcoming season. We have a transfer of Sarah Townsend. We have a need for a special education teacher to help with options programming. And in that shifting, we've also been terminating Sarah Townsend. They requested a transfer, so I'd like to approve that. Um, we then, in order to backfill Sarah's position, the special education position, which originally was Emily Ansalom's at Westside. Um, would be filled by Noel Hamilton and will be collapsing the Westside position of Emily Ansalom. So it's some shifting to where those student enrollment numbers are. Joan Schrank uh has been um hired as a high school coach. We're advising Barbara Myers for the school year. And then Jacob Schultz um has been hired as a high school head too.
Question, any questions, Mr. Schrank?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for September 28th, 2020, including the new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug speeding as presented.
Just a second. Is it moved in second and to approve the personal recommendation sheet for September 28th, 2020, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski.
Yes.
I have middle school guests present this evening.
Second reading and revise professional staff support staff.
And then we see any further feedback on you.
Are there any questions from this fellow?
I move to approve the revised professional staff and support staff employee handbooks as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revised professional staff and support staff employee handbooks as presented. Throw a couple please.
All right, Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski.
Yes.
Nope.
All right. Now I'm slowing myself down.
My social awareness school board meeting on record.
I don't read.
They had that in those 15 minutes.
I remember we bypassed the announcements. You can read them like that. No, it went way fast. There's uh.
Hey, but my best one.
Almost 10:30. I'm not sure when it will end, sorry.
I think they started at.
Okay.
You know, that would make sense. Yeah, I hear each 30 minutes.
Yep.
So on the announcements, um, I wanted to share with you real quick, a student enrollment update. Now, this is just a the open enrollment. We don't have our third Friday count numbers done. We have to go through and track down the missing, which we don't have very many. Uh, we're not like MPS having, I think, 3,000 students who have never logged into their, they're going online.
Oh.
And so they, yeah, if you can imagine us. Yeah. But our entire district, we're not quite. Okay, so we have, um, again, the third Friday count's not finalized. 692 students opened rolled in, 178 students opened rolled out. That number is only as good as when Jody counts it because it's I think it was by the time she said she emailed it, she told them, I well, since I emailed it, it changed by two. So um that's a net gain of 514. For reference, we ended last year with 596 students opened enrolled in and 153 out. Um, so it was a, it's 71 more students than the end of last year. But when we look at it from a budgetary, we look at that third Friday count to third Friday count. So it's 102 more than the prior year. I know we had budgeted a little over 90. Um, I believe it was that for Bill looking at it. Jody and I, we were really confident would be over 120. What happened is we had an influx of some open enrollment out at the end. So you see where usually this number stays really flat, where about 25 students more than opened rolled out, some choosing, you know, different virtual schools, which we always follow up with them on. You know, I know I had one family applied that shared with me they were going to go to Burlington because they were doing the hybrid schedule, you know, at Dinesh's, and they liked that. So those numbers add up. We hope, you know, they'll choose to come back to help one, but the the. the real surprise was, and this is a unique year, we had, I believe Jody said that it was, I know it was over thirty families who did the alternative open enrollment application who didn't choose to come. And usually that's a real solid number when they do the alternative open enrollment application, because that doesn't open up until after July one. I think what happened is we just have a lot of families who, they didn't know what their school plans were gonna be, so they were putting in the alternative open enrollment application, and then waiting and seeing. So, you know, that threw that projection off a little bit there, but it's still much higher of a net gain than what we've seen in the past years. I thought this was interesting, at the bottom of the open enrollment reports, it gives you the full breakdown, the actual monetary amount. So this is our open enrollment in is approximately six million dollars in revenue, our open enrollment out is approximately one point four five. So that was our open enrollment. The WASB regional meeting that we have each year, which I'm really disappointed in this format, because maybe I'll just have to make myself private, but, no dinner, it's an event, we'll be on the website, if we wanted to stream it and need to the location, we could do that, or we could just stream it from home, but that is on October twenty ninth at seven o'clock.
We're the only ones that can get the private voting, try and locate it.
I guess we could still go there and request the dinner for.
Oh, the Spreeos?
The Spreeos, yeah.
Yeah.
This is the one that says Spreeos each year. I'll come back to, let's see, shortly after George Floyd died, and there was a lot of that fervor and the protests started in our country, I was made aware and referred to, and I don't recall who referred me to it, whether it was a board member or just a community member, but to a page, a Facebook page, a former Elkhorn alumni, that were sharing their stories or their experience that they had as BIPOC students, BIPOC, Black Indigenous people of color is what BIPOC stands for, and to be frank, they weren't very positive experiences that they were sharing. And so, I reached out to them and, you know, started a dialogue, shared with them that I'd like to, you know, have a conversation and have some discussions around, you know, what it was like for them, and to also engage them and let them know what we've been working on and sharing, and so we had our first meeting with them, but I've shared with you here in the notes, we're not gonna go through all this, there's quite a bit in there, but I shared with them this document, I asked Sarah Bosch and Amy G to assist with this, I want to give them a lot of credit in their help, but in looking at all of our initiatives and what we've been doing and working on as a school, to help address some of these issues and these matters. And so I think it would be good for you to be aware as a school board, if you get asked these questions, what are we doing, what have we done as a school district? I want you to be aware that, you know, all of these pieces have that equity components and tolerance pieces interwoven and tied into them are part of that foundation. It's not that any one of them was done specifically or solely for that reason, but all of them we knew had those embedded components and those qualities. I mean, one of the reasons why we looked at Avid as a school district is there was no other system or program out there that had such high-performance results for children of color and minority groups as well. So, I included all of that there, and then also the, last year, the middle school and the high school were a part of a very select group within the state that, you know, working with some of the equity and diversity training and so forth, and they went to numerous workshops last year as part of this consortium, and out of that work, again, all before this was happening in the country and the discussion around equity started, they had a plan and a focus and have been working on that for years, and I think one of the positives that we've seen is our achievement gaps at the high school, the score increased at such a level that on the state report card, they had to put the little asterisk by it. So their work has shown tremendous results in the performance of our students from our diverse backgrounds and so forth, and it's something they've been working on for a while. I want to say that the group that we're working with, they had some great suggestions and ideas as well, and again, former alumni, they're all actually highly educated women working in the field, they said they tried to recruit some former guys to be a part of the group, but they haven't found any yet, but they were all graduated around two thousand ten, two thousand nine, so over ten years ago, so I think it's a good resource pool as well for them to help bring in some of their knowledge, their backgrounds, their experience that can help some of our students and help us work on these issues and improve. So they were very pleased that we'd started this, we're gonna have a monthly meeting with them, and just continue that dialogue and look at, you know, ways that we can better serve our students. As well, so, any questions on that?
So you are seeing, we are seeing an achievement, that achievement gap trend?
Yes, we are, and that score was, I know, Chris, you were on the chart, the call, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or, I believe on our closing the gap score at the high school was an eighty-nine last year, I'd have to go back to that school report card, but it was, it was very good, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but, but I know Sarah and I have worked closely with some of the best practices in equity, you know, in addition to Avid, but we've also launched a different model that Rita could share too with regards to special ed, and one of the things that we did this summer was did an equity audit, and one of the highlights was that there, at the high school, there was proportional representation in many of our rigorous courses. What I mean by that is, if we have twelve percent of our students are Hispanic, then at least twelve percent of our students are AP and honors role, honors courses, and I, and that's a very, that's something to really celebrate for what we're doing, plus we've seen gains in our performance across the board on the, on the ACT scores. Obviously, there's always additional work to do, but we continue to just analyze that as a point of emphasis and a big part of what should be done for all districts.
Now, I think from, and we, so we have great data on those fronts, and what they shared, and I'll, I'll share it with the board, a document where they put together like a Google forum and ask people to share their testimonies or their stories of their experience, so some of what's now measured on there is, you know, how you're made to feel, either, you know, by looks, by comments, by things that, you know, happen within the community or how you're treated, and so you can have the closing gaps and all that, I think we've improved on those other fronts as well, but it's still an area that we still need to work with, just today, you know, the middle school, you know, let me know, because they know I want to know if we have any sort of discrimination that could rise to a Title Nine type complaint, so we have a student referring to another student, you know, with the N-word, and we take that very serious and have severe consequences on that, which some of them felt like back when they were in school that it may have, not that there wasn't consequences, but they may have felt like, from their perspective, the consequences weren't as severe as perhaps it should be, but it's still work that we have to do, they understand that too, that, you know, schools probably do so much, that it's a community-based piece, and it's something we have to work on, so, I think it's a positive engagement, I'm excited to work with them on that. Then I wanted to share with you the Booster Club project, hopefully this will open and This is at the entrance at the Maybe I won't.
Sign into my Microsoft account, because I couldn't remember what it was, so.
I don't understand it. While this is loading, with our number of additional students.
That's the didn't.
All right, it was a really pretty drone shot of the field and the new brick that's even at the entrance, it looks really nice getting finished off, so I want to thank the Booster Club and Mr. Steppnitz for providing that, I'll figure out a way to all upload it to YouTube and share the link that way. But in addition, we're, our tech department, they've run extremely efficient for years, and even adding one tech would keep them very extremely efficient, but they're really stretched beyond their, you know, what they're able to support and the number of computers that we have, how many total techs are, where you have, Randy, I believe, has the equivalent of four.
Four, and then he'll get an intern through Gateway every once in a while, yeah.
So, to give you a perspective, I'm not, I definitely don't think we should be at this level, but when I worked with NWA and with trained schools around the country, I remember going to a school in Chicago, and they had a room full of all these techs, which I thought was weird, it was a unified high school, and it was about fourteen hundred students, and I said, how many techs do you guys have? They said, oh, we've got ten. I said, ten techs, what are you doing with ten computer techs? Oh, they're swamped, I mean, each one of them's responsible for a hundred computers. Give me a break, a hundred computers? So our techs, when you do the math, they're, they're responsible, if you include the hot swamps, for about four thousand computers, so about a thousand computers per tech, that's just including the student devices, you throw the staff devices on there, they're, you know, they're probably over a thousand computers, and that's just managing that aspect of it, they have all the infrastructure, all the, so we're really, we're stretched, so we'd like to add an additional tech.
Would that be a full-time position, or?
Yeah, I'd be looking at a full-time school year position, and then perhaps shifting the other two techs to summer, they're right now ten-month employees, to be honest, it's, I don't know how we even find people to just do the school year tech, because you're competing with industries where they're working full-time.
Sure, right, yeah.
So you almost, you have to find someone that has a unique summer situation where they light that off, or they have to do something else.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have for the announcements, sorry, drag it out a little bit longer, but.
Looking for emotional adjournment.
I'll soon move it.
Second.
I'm just gonna do a adjournment, go public. Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowski?
Yes.